All right, I show 12 o'clock. Good afternoon. I hereby call this Agenda Review Meeting of the NACADOTAS ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of the following board members is present. Please indicate your presence by saying aye. Vice President James Montoya.
Here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow.
Here.
Lea Beth App.
Here.
The Reverend James Urban.
Present.
Hey Reverend. Dr. Tyrell Gromon.
Aye.
And Mr. Fashid Naraman.
Here.
All right, thank you all. We appreciate your participation today. Thank you for joining us. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of the Zoom software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during public comment will have that opportunity. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. The Zoom software allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate this technology. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at T O M A at O A G dot Texas dot gov. As a reminder, this is an agenda review meeting. No action will be taken today. The first item on our agenda for today is public comments, and no one signed up for public comment today. So we will move to item three, Agenda Review, the Consent Agenda. If anybody has any questions or comments on the board meeting minutes, please let me know now.
Dr. Gromon, I have a question. When we were talking about the buses that we were securing for improved safety on our travel with our students, we mentioned that we used the Byboard and that we saved somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000. I didn't see that anywhere in this listing. Is that, should that be in those minutes?
Holly, can you advise?
Usually minutes have minimal discussion and mostly a record of action taken. However, I could amend them to include that.
I just think it's important that the public knows that we are being very cautious and good stewards of the funds. And I think utilizing the Byboard, we've really made that much, that safety comes at a really reasonable cost for our students.
All right, I will amend them for Thursday's meeting.
Okay, Mr. Martin knows the exact number, but it's somewhere, it's approaching $200,000.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gromon. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to item two, Business Office Reports. Mrs. Barbrick.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, Board Members, Dr. Trujillo. I would like to begin with our budget amendments, which... I'm not sure what page it's on.
I show page 17 in the board book.
Okay, I see that now. Okay, page 17. So Budget Amendment A, I'm asking permission to pull funds from fund balance to purchase security cameras. This was a budgeted purchase to be completed in the 1920 school year, but due to the computer virus and COVID virus, it was not done. It's still very much needed. We need new cameras throughout the district. And again, this was not spent in 1920. Item number B, we received some funds were donated for convocation. Some budgeting the revenue and the associated expense. Item number C, Fine Arts Department has asked for funds, to move funds to pay for instructional consulting. So it will go from 13, Function 13, Curriculum and Staff Development, and from 21, Instructional Leadership into Function 11 for instruction. And I have two Cs, so the second C, budget funds received from insurance claim from maintenance and the cyber attack. So increasing Function 51 for maintenance expenses that are associated with that claim, and 41 for the legal expenses, and then the associated revenue that we received. Any questions on the budget amendments? All right, I'll move on to the next item. On page 22, Gifts and Donations under 2500. The Board, the Board. The Plant Services received a donation of a lawnmower, leaf blower, fertilizer spreader, and electrical supplies for maintenance from James Allen. The DSC received a donation of school supplies from the Dollar Tree. The high school received a donation of breakfast for school staff from Pool Real Estate. And Nettie Marshall received a donation of $26.29 for school supplies from Kroger. Any questions on donations? All right, I'll move on to investments. Again, nothing unusual here. We're continuing to receive interest, though not as much. Someday, those interest rates will come up again, but right now they're not. So we earned $5,492 in general fund, debt service $6,572, and in bond fund, $12,794. Any questions on investments? All right, and then I'll entertain any other questions you may have on my other reports.
I had a question from the check register sorted by vendor. I'm not sure if you can answer this or not. We may need to pivot to Dr. Hill. The charge from Seesaw, is that our annual charge since we are now using them?
I'm sorry. I don't have the amount in front of me.
It was like 8,000 or something. I'm looking at by vendor, and it was September 10th. I don't have the page numbers you do because I have a printed copy. I read that better. It was $8,673.50.
Yes, ma'am, I believe that is the amount for our first year of the subscription.
Okay, so that's going to be a year, our year subscription. Okay, good. I also saw some charges of other things that we're using, and a lot of them I was familiar with. And I really don't want to take up board time for this, but Dr. Hill, if you wouldn't mind sometime emailing me, who uses the Cengage, the Estralita, and Learning A to Z? I just kind of get, like to get my mind around all of these different softwares and supplemental curriculums that we're using just to have a better grasp of the ones that I'm not familiar with and who is using them so that I'm more prepared next spring when we, you know, create our budget again. So just a little, if you don't mind doing that, Dr. Hill. And I'll be happy to email you that request if that would be easier.
Sure. Well, I think you said Cengage, Estralita, and Learning A to Z?
Yes, that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Gromon, I had a question. We had a check to Morgan Oil for about $11,000, and I assume that's to fill the big tanks for our buses. I was just wondering how we bid those out and how often that will happen? Who's in charge of all that?
That is Mr. Labkin in Transportation. And what he does is he... And he may be better able to answer this, but I'll try to summarize it. He calls into several companies to get a price on a drop, you know, meaning to bring in the fuel. And so he has several vendors he chooses from, and whoever has the lowest, he brings that, has them come in and drop.
Excellent. So that means that we're not locked into anything, anytime we can get the best price, which is really smart.
That's correct.
Good planning.
That's Mr. Labkin.
Any additional questions before we move on? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to item three, A, Mentoring Minds. Dr. Hill.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Trujillo. Thank you for allowing me to talk to you about Mentoring Minds. It is an instructional resource that we've been using for quite some time now at the majority of the elementaries and both middle schools. It was an expenditure that we did get approval from you all last year to purchase. So this year, the only difference is that Mike Moses has resources left over from our purchase from last year due to the school closure. So they are one of the two middle schools that are not choosing to purchase additional materials this year. So we have all six elementaries. You'll notice on the different quotes, the majority of them say online subscription, with the exception of Carpenter, where they are purchasing a bundle where they're wanting both printed copies as well as online availability. These resources are available in both English and Spanish. So you'll see some Spanish availability or wants on the campuses that do have bilingual. These are resources that are for grades one through eight in English and one through five in Spanish.
Dr. Hill?
Yes, sir.
This is Coach Fashid. I have a couple of questions for my own clarifications. Are those, when we receive those, for example, the digital portion, is it going to be a part of NISD's property? Or after a certain number of days or months or years, it's going to be disconnected? How does it work?
So it is an annual subscription. So I hope that answers your question. So this is a year, an annual fee. Now, the prices per individual bundle may change. I didn't necessarily compare it to mine here. But it is housed for the students as far as the digital components under their one sign-in, in which is what we call ClassLink. And so students are able to access the Mentoring Minds. We're going to call it an app, if you will, via ClassLink.
Okay. My question is, are those going to be a part of school's property? Or they would be disconnected and would be taken away from future use?
So at the end of this year, and I apologize, at the end of this year, the, for like the online portion, that availability would be taken away from us unless we resubscribe to their services. Now, if we ordered the print versions, which we did last year and which Carpenter wants to do this year, then any of those printed materials that they have remaining at the end of this year would remain our property, much like Mike Moses is doing with their printed versions.
Okay, my, again, from my own information, let's say, for example, it says, online ThinkUp Math S E Level 1.
Yes, sir.
How long, how much time requires that Level 1 of math be taught?
Great question. So the Level 1 for Mentoring Minds language is the equivalent to our grade levels. So like Level 1 would be the equivalent of Grade 1, Level 2, and Grade 2.
Okay. And when I compare, some of them have meant, I mean, Level 1 this year, and some have Level 2, or some even have Level 3. Does it mean they have been more advanced, that they take next level?
No, sir, not necessarily. So what we typically do, Coach Fashid, is when we're ordering things like Mentoring Minds that offers multiple subjects and or multiple levels in this case, we allow the principals and their curriculum APs to go through and let us know which particular subjects and grade levels they're wanting to purchase. So there may be some variance from quote to quote, and it could depend on their inventory that they had left over from last year, or they didn't necessarily want to use this as an instructional resource for this school year.
Go back to my question. If they are not, we can hold on to it and use it the following year?
Yes, sir, for the printed versions, yes, sir.
Okay. Next question I have is, I am looking at School A, purchasing online ThinkUp Math S E Level 1, and also Campus B, purchasing exactly the same thing, and Campus C also buying the same thing. One buys 125, 190, 115. And aren't we able to use buy once and every campus uses it? Or when we purchase that, it belongs to that particular campus only?
Usually when we purchase things, and Mentoring Minds is one of those where you buy it per unit, if that makes sense. I hope that answers your question.
And instead of like a site license to where any and all students could use it,
which I believe is something similar to like an iStation purchases, where they would buy a site license for it, Mentoring Minds is one that you have to buy per student. And then you get, you know, then you have to purchase the teacher edition as well. And in some instances in this, like they, you have to purchase so many student editions and you get the teacher resources for free.
Yes, I clearly understand. I am looking, for example, Item 600110, which is, like I said, ThinkUp Math S E 1 Level 1. One campus purchases 125 with a price of about $1,618. And Campus B also buys the same item number for 90 of them. And Campus C also buys the same, and we charge for each campus separately. What my question is, is it possible for an Item 6001110 to be shared with all campuses instead of buying at three different positions, at three different times?
It's a great question. So typically, in instances like this, when we're using individual different campus codes, we requested, you know, this number of quotes, if that makes sense. If we were purchasing for the entire district, I think for ease and inventory purposes, it's easier for us to get a by-campus quote versus like a district quote so that we would purchase that particular item number that you mentioned with the number of Level 1s that we need across the board. But it's also my understanding that when we quoted this, they knew the magnitude, and so we were able to receive a discount as if we had just requested one quote overall for the district. Does that make sense? So the savings are distributed even though we've gotten, what, is it eight different quotes in front of us? Seven, seven different quotes.
Coach, let me, I think that the question that you're asking is, is when we buy a license, it's connected to that student. So the company does not allow us to share that resource among multiple students. That license is per student.
Yes, ma'am.
Coach, do you have another question? Because I do when you're through.
No, ma'am, you go ahead.
Okay. I may have misunderstood you, Dr. Hill, but is it my understanding that this is the first time we're going to be getting the digital version?
No, ma'am, last year we also had the digital version.
As well as the, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we know that it's going to work.
It has been linked in with ClassLink as of last year as well.
Okay, great.
Great question.
I have a question, Dr. Hill, follow-up on Coach's question. So you're saying that because you did school by school, we got a discount versus if we would have done the entire school district for the request, for what it would cost? Is that correct?
The discount that you see on these various quotes would be the same discount that we would have received if we just had requested one quote for maybe all Level 1s across the board.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Naraman, I want to take a moment to make sure that you're, you feel like your question has been answered and you have an understanding. Is that correct, or do you have additional questions?
Yes and no. My question is, which, for example, Campus A, who purchases 125 of those, is this going to be to 125 students on this campus?
Yes.
Okay. And Campus B has a 90, requested 90, it goes for 90 students on that campus?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My question was, if you could buy a bundle of it, then we divide it. I guess we don't know what, how many people want to be on each campus. So I'm clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions on Mentoring Minds?
I would just like to know the discount in terms of amount, how much of a discount we would get for doing it, like she was saying, like Dr. Hill was saying.
If I'm not mistaken, it was $1,295 for each item.
You said we were going to get a discount, right?
Yes, sir. You'll notice on each quote, like that item that Coach was just referring to, you'll see that the list price normally is $1,995 per item, and they've reduced it to $12.95. And then on each quote on the last page where you have the grand total, you'll see a total savings on each quote.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
No.
Hearing that, we'll move to item 3B, Commercial Kitchens. Mrs. Barbrick.
Good afternoon again. This is a purchase for student nutrition. Several pieces of equipment are beyond repair and need to be replaced. And on the second page, you'll see the tabulation of the bid she got. And the chosen one is commercial kitchens. It is not the lowest, but they are the only ones that will install the equipment, whereas the others will not install. If we have another company install, then that could possibly void the warranty.
So they will install, and then they will, if there's an issue with any of this equipment, they will, under the warranty, they'll come in and fix it. What about after the warranty? They responsible for that?
After the warranty, you're asking who will repair the equipment?
Or will we have the option of having them come out and take care of it, to say installed it? Or can we have somebody else to come on and check it if there's a problem after the warranty?
I would have to pass that answer on to Ms. Backer.
Well, as you know, we have a wonderful maintenance department, and they take care of a lot of our equipment. As once the warranty is over, they take care of it. And it's under their recommendation that we're replacing all this because it's beyond them being able to repair it.
All right, so you'll have, we'll have maintenance be able to take care of it.
Yes, sir. They, I talked to them to make sure it's equipment that they're comfortable with. And a lot of these manufacturers also have online books and stuff that they'll help them work through the repair process.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, we'll move to item 3C, A and E Office Machines. Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, members of the board, Dr. Trujillo. The administration is recommending a purchase of 20 temperature kiosk machines from A and E Technologies Machine Incorporated to be able to assist with employee and visitor temperature-taking measures. The kiosk will help to streamline arrival procedures for employees and visitors entering the buildings each day and give a touchless option compared to handheld thermometers for these locations. The amount or the budget impact of the 20 machines is $49,900 to be taken from Essar Funds. And I will go ahead and also offer that Mr. Whittaker has did a wonderful job of getting us a great savings or discount per unit for about $500 per unit, saving the district $10,000 on this purchase, should you approve. These are the temperature kiosks that you all see out in the front of the boardroom where you just walk by and just put your face in there, and it tells you, it gives you a green light or it gives you a red light. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Martin, what is their life expectancy on their battery? Do they have a battery or connected to electricity?
They are connected to a power outlet.
There is no battery involved?
No, sir.
I have a question, Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
This is primarily, looks like, the plan is for employee and visitors. So to your knowledge, for instance, elementary schools, these smaller schools, aren't planning to use it on the students? This is just for the employees and visitors?
Yes, Ms. App, at this point in time, we want to see how this works for our employees, our adults. And they do make a model that is actually the same exact machine. It is just a shorter stand on it.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
And also, this, this particular one that we're asking for your approval on, it does have a tilt feature that they showed us we were not familiar with, but we'll also allow it to tilt downward so that we can pick up smaller, smaller folks if we need to.
I think my question was, well, I mean, you answered my question, but I'm feeling like in my brain, though, that I had this, I'm wondering, this is expense to make it faster for just our employees and visitors. And is it really that big of a delay to be, or right now, we just trusting them to take their own temperatures?
Well, we, what it does is it's a touchless option. It also, on the backside of it, does a little bit more than just take your temperature, Ms. App. What it does is it, through facial recognition and through the software, what it will do is it will let us know who all has come, who all has taken their temperature, what time they took their temperature, what the temperature was, if need be. It gives us much more information than just the taking of the temperature.
Ah, okay, thank you.
I might add also, what it, another benefit to something like this is we have specific venues and events throughout the year that we want to stay true to folks coming in and not bogging down at the entrance. That may be at a basketball game, that may be at a play, that may be at a performance. These are portable as well, that we can relocate them and put them at the entrances so we can kind of expedite, you know, some of the issues with this temperature is when you have folks congregating and grouping on the entrances or the exits. So in a matter of seconds, and I think each one of the board members, you were able to kind of stand in front of it and see how quickly it works. And so that's an added feature that we're pretty impressed with. So for instance, at the high school, we would be able to use that at different points of entrance. So for instance, at the high school, we would be able to use that at different points of entry. Our elementary schools, if they have an event coming up, we would be able to utilize them in that capacity as well. So when we say visitors, it's not just your typical day in, day out, when school is open and closing, it's all the other things as well that tie up an individual. A person needs to stand there with a handheld. So the question of who is going to stand at the doorway with the handheld where you could kind of multitask by having this, this unique piece of technology at our, at our schools.
So a couple of questions, if I may. I see that the proposal is to purchase 20 of these. Where, what is the plan? Where will those 20 be deployed?
They will be deployed, we're looking at Briskewin Jones having one to two, Regay having one to two, Fredoni having one, Nacogdoches High School having about four, Mike Moses and McMichael having two to three, Malcolm having one, Nettie having one, TJR one. We polled our principals to see how many they thought that they might need to be able to operate efficiently. The DSC, of course, would have one, Transportation Student Support Services, Plant Services, mainly our largest populated locations to include departments.
When we say, and I heard what Dr. Trujillo said about it being more efficient, you don't have to have someone standing there to check the temperature, they can kind of walk in front of it, is that to assume then it's going to be kind of self-monitoring? If somebody walks in front of it and it says, oh, it flashes red, is there going to be somebody there kind of monitoring, saying, all right, you've got to turn around and go the other way? Or is it all self-monitored?
It will be a little bit of both. We will be able to check the logs and the records if someone did, say, come in with a fever that it registered. But like in our building and most of our locations across the districts, we have some, we have a receptionist at the front entrance.
All right, but can the receptionist actually, because when it, does it blink on both sides? So the receptionist will sit there, would she be able to, she or he be able to see that it was blinking red?
She will be able to, he or she would be able to see it and it also makes a noise. It also makes an alert sound.
Okay. And help me, you said it's, the purchase is being funded with ESER funds. Help me, that's a new term. I don't recall. What are ESER funds?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Barbrick to help me with that acronym. I'm in a loss.
These are funds that we received during the 1920 year and they're available to spend through the 2021 year. They're specifically, were provided by the federal government because of the COVID virus. And we, they, this TEA took money from us when we received this fund, these funds for 1920. But we did not need all the funds for 1920, so we have an excess amount to spend in 2021. One of the proper spendings of these funds are to, are in, to purchase items to deal with the COVID virus. So this is definitely an approved expense for these funds.
And it stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And it's a national initiative that initially started off with about $13.2 billion. And Texas gets a portion of that as well, which gets funneled down to the individual districts and county areas. And so we've got some ESER funds that are there that we keep going to Ms. Barbrick and making sure as we're looking at purchases, does it first fit the definition of ESER funds so that we don't have to use local funds or anything like that? And she's been very diligent. She's got a document that kind of guides us as to what fits a definition of an ESER fund. And we've even looked at some purchases that we have done and see, do they still fit that? And how does a budget align itself to those expenditures? Trust me, we've, we've put some things in front of her thinking, can we do ESER funds? And she's really, really good at saying, I wish we could, but no, we can't.
There you go.
Definition with regards to that.
Well, my compliments to you both for identifying a funding mechanism outside of local to get this, this technology for us.
We received $2.5 million and we spent about $500,000 in the 1920 year.
And if I could just get some clarification that as we try this out, if it looks like it would be helpful, we can point it down for our little elementary students, right? We won't have to buy a whole shorter ones or anything.
We can, but I would strongly recommend that we come back and consider purchasing some shorter ones for some of our, such as our precachers. They are very short.
Okay.
I have a question, and I don't know if this is answerable or not, but in reference to these machines that you're going to put at the schools, say there's enough power outage, do these, do these things recalibrate themselves? Or are we going to have to have somebody taking care of these if the power goes down?
No, sir. Power goes down, of course, we will pull the infrared thermometers out that we're using at most locations now. My understanding is they should recalibrate upon power being restored, power and internet being restored.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think it's probably used by the faculty and staff more often than visitors since we have no visitors and guests.
Yes, Coach, you're correct.
Any additional questions?
All right.
Oh, I have a question. Do we do monitoring going into football games? And would we use these for that?
Yes, sir, Dr. Gromen. Dr. Trujillo and I have talked about that in great detail. And we, one of the reasons that we're purchasing so many for the high school is also to assist us with, like he, like Dr. Trujillo said, other events that we might have, such as football games, basketball games. So we can register those temperatures of the visitors that come into those facilities.
Excellent, thank you.
That brings up an interesting question on delivery timeline.
It's a great question. Let me, let me get the answer for you on that delivery question.
You know, what's one thing interesting from what Dr. G has just asked is that when we do at the football game, we could have one person monitoring multiple devices, whereas you would have to have a handheld thermometer and you'd have five of them, you've got to have five people paid on an hourly rate to scan and take temperatures. Well, we might be able to use our, our gate entrance monitors, stand there, maybe have four devices as folks are just coming up and standing in front and going into the room, into the, look, much more on the efficiency side.
All right, hearing no additional questions at this time, we'll move to item four, Appointment of School Health Advisory Council Members. Dr. Young.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Trujillo, Board members, President Fitch. I am presenting to you the list of community members, employees, and parents that have agreed to be part of our Shack Committee. This is a requirement by the Shack Committee to provide this information to the board and for the board to approve it. So please, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Dr. Young, I have a question. I, I'm wondering, how, how do you decide who gets put on the committee? Is it by request, by individuals, or do you get a list of people? How do you guys determine who to put on this?
It's pretty much anybody from the community or parents that want to be on the committee. It's, it's not limited in any way. There are particular employees from the district that are required to be on the committee based on, on the state requirements. But outside of that, it's anyone who wants to be on the committee.
Now, my other question, and I don't know if you can answer this or not, but the people from the community, did you have more than one person to request to be considered for this? Or is you just took the first person that decided to be on the committee?
There's, there's quite a few actually on the list that are community members.
No, but I'm saying from the, the people that are on the list from the community, were there more than these individuals that requested to be considered to be on the committee?
No, everyone that requested to be on the committee is on that list.
All right, thank you, Dr. Young.
Yes, sir. And just so you know, we're, we are an open committee and are glad to accept additional recommendations and will be glad to re-present that list to the board at any time.
Dr. Young, I think in the past, you've actually struggled to get members of the community and parents to participate. Is that right?
That is correct, but we have been very fortunate by holding the meetings after school. We've had a larger participation. And now this year, the meetings will be presented via Zoom until further notice.
So this is actually a really good list of community members. I was kind of, I've looked at it before and I was like, wow, you guys recruited well. Congratulations, good job.
Thank you. Yes, it's, it's been, it's been a lot of good work representing the district for the Shack Committee. And we, we've done the best we can to continue to encourage people to join us. So thank you.
You know, this is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
Okay, Dr. Gromen. Dr. Young, how many nurses from the district or other health personnel are on the, the, on this committee? And I know there's some are mandated, but do we have excess above what's mandated?
So we have the nurse supervisor who's on your committee list, but then we have others that, other nurses that actually come and participate in the meetings that are not necessarily on the committee.
Excellent, thank you.
Mrs. App.
I just have to make a comment. Looking at this, this list of individuals that's on this committee, I don't think it's representative of the entire community. I don't know how we can get other facets of our community to become involved with this because I think it's important that we have a good representation across the board. And that's just my comment.
Okay, thank, well, thank you. Again, we, we reach out and y'all are welcome to recommend anyone to the committee. And we will, we can continue to present additional committee members. Anyone can participate in the Shack meetings and, and, you know, bring their opinions and comments as well.
Thank you, Dr.
Mrs. App, I believe. Yeah, right. I was just going to thank you, Dr. Young, for, for doing this. I mean, in this crazy atmosphere that you're proceeding and getting this, you know, back on track here so that we can have these, these meetings. And it, it made me then wonder because I saw that DAC, our District Advisory Council, also met recently. And I haven't seen the list of those new members. So I was wondering, Dr. Hill, if we could get a list of those members as well, since we obviously have some new ones.
Doc, I don't know if Dr. Hill was going to respond to that, but I can tell you that Mr. Maury is now our DAC leader for the district. And so I'm sure that he'll be glad to provide that information to you. I'll, I'll shoot him an email.
Thank you so much, Dr. Young.
Mr. Tarvin's on here. I just couldn't get myself off mute fast enough, but Mr. Tarvin.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll get those to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And anything else about Shack that I can assist with?
Thank you so much, Dr. Young.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. All right, that'll move us to item five on our consent, CIPA-compliant Internet Safety Report. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, President Fitch. On page 110 of your board book, we have the Texas Education Agency under new guidelines released by the FCC require that all schools that apply for E-rate discounts on internet access, internet connections, and basic maintenance post-public notice of a board meeting to discuss and for the school to, school board to approve compliant policy or Children's Internet Protection Act policy. I will tell you that NACODOT Society is currently in compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Regulation. NACODOT Society Technology Department utilizes and maintains an appliance made by iBoss and GoGuardian. The appliances monitor and block content from the internet as defined in the Children's Internet Protection Act. Technology purchases support from iBoss and GoGuardian yearly, which keeps the appliances up to date with new definitions. iBoss and GoGuardian are continuously searching and blocking any or any potential websites that fall under the SEPA-defined regulations. They then update our definitions in our appliances here locally. So our students are being protected from potential predators, pornography, things that are deemed harmful to minors over the internet system. I'll be happy to have any questions.
Mr. Fitch, I'm sorry to, to interrupt, but we've lost the boardroom. I'm going to go in there and reconnect them.
Thank you, sir. Let's pause for just a moment. These are those technology difficulties we talk about.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, Mr. Montoya. Yes.
Okay.
We got, we got, I don't know what happened. I think the technology buzz went through the air here and took the Internet out of this phone.
All right. So, Mr. Martin, did, did you guys hear Mr. Martin's full presentation on the CIPA-compliant Internet Safety Report?
Of the Shack report.
All right. All right. So, Mr. Martin, if you would, re-present your presentation on CIPA.
My pleasure. The Texas Education Agency under new guidelines released by the FCC require that all schools that receive E-Rate funding discounts for Internet access, Internet connections and basic maintenance post-public notice of a school board meeting to discuss and for the school board to approve a Children's Internet Protection Act compliant policy. Furthermore, a yearly report given on the, on the complacency status of the district's CIPA policy and report must be reflected in the board agenda in the minutes of the meeting. I also elaborated that NACADOTSD is currently in compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act regulations. The district's tech department utilizes and maintains an appliance made by iBoss and GoGuardian. These appliances monitors and blocks content from the Internet as well as filters and complies with the Children's Internet Protection Act. The technology purchases support iBoss and GoGuardian and has an annual fee as well as it is regularly updated with new definitions to protect our students from things out there on the Internet that may be harmful to our students. Be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Dr. Gromen, I have a question, Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir.
This is, this is not an app on each device. This is something outside the device that filters what's coming out of our Wi-Fi system, correct?
It, it is, it is actually an appliance. Well, it's actually two, two devices, two things happening here. One is an appliance that sits in the Technology Department that filters everything that comes over our Internet connection out to, to our ISP or Internet service provider. The other is a, an app, an actual app that sits on the, the machine that also does filtering. So we have a dual layer, so to say, of protection against pornography and other things that may be harmful to minors.
Okay, to, to follow this up. So this app that's on the device, when they go home, that's what actually filters.
Yes.
Can they remove that or can it only be removed by administrators?
Yes, sir. You're, you're correct, Dr. Gromen. That, when they take that device home, that is the GoGuardian part of it. It is filtered on their end and they cannot remove that app from that machine. Only the Technology Department Administration can remove that app.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that app also susceptible to hacking?
Yes, sir. It, it does, to a certain extent, protect the device from, from hacking attempts. It keeps a log of those who are, who have tried to hack either from the side of the student or the head of an outsider. Any other questions? I may entertain for you all.
All right. Hearing that, we will move to item six, additional T-Test Appraisers for the 2020-2021 school year, and that's Mr. Martin as well.
Thank you, President Fitch. As we brought Appraisers to your, for your approval in the September Board Meeting, we told you that there would be others that we would be bringing later on. Well, we're here. We have four more who have completed all of the necessary trainings by the State Board of Education. And we're asking for your approval for these four individuals to be added to our T-Test appraisal system. Be happy to answer any questions.
So that will make the total of how many assessors for the district if we add these four?
If we add these four, I, I believe it's gonna be somewhere around 30.
Will that be sufficient for covering the district?
Yes, sir. Very, very sufficient. Yes, sir.
Any additional questions regarding the T-Test Appraisers? All right. Hearing that, we'll move to item seven. That one has my name beside it. Thank you. This, uh, these are revising our board operating procedures to reflect the new policy we adopted regarding public comment. So the changes reflect the changes that we made a few months ago within that, that allows public comment at all of our meetings and at a regular meeting. It does, it's not restricted to agenda items. Are there any questions or discussion on this? All right. Hearing none, we will move to our discussion action, agenda discussion items. Item one is a consideration of a contract with Absolute Technology Solutions. Mr. Martin.
Thank you again, President Fitch. Administration is recommending a contract with Absolute Technology Solutions. This support service contract will provide technology restoration for our server management and maintenance network as well as many, management and maintenance review of our systems, provide recommendation for future purchases and assist in the distribution and implementation of mobile devices. We have been working with Absolute Technology here this, this fall, and they have been a wonderful resource for us. They've helped the tech department a great deal. They've done a lot of actual repairs, physical repairs of our servers and our network issues that we were having. They brought back online many of the systems that we have known and enjoyed in the past, many of our tools. And we are asking that you approve this contract as well as the funds to go along with it with the total budget impact not to exceed $180,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
I'm looking at the last before the signature and it says that on occasion, many occasionally may be the case, our standard markup would be 10% of our cost. Is that 10% every year or just 10% whenever they need to do that?
No, sir. That, that is 10% a year should the district decide to renew the contract in, in future years.
Mr. Martin, is this funding existing in our current budget or is this going to require a budget amendment at a future meeting?
It is existing in our current budget. Ms. Barbara, I'm not sure if it's gonna require an amendment, but I do know it's in the current budget.
It should not require an amendment because it will stay within the same function.
Thank you, ma'am.
I believe that in a previous meeting, we had the question was posed. I think Dr. Gromen asked the question, what does it look like for deployment? When we start looking at deploying these devices, do we have the staff to do that? This partnership allows us to look at, we've got Mr. Michael, Mr. Martin, how many devices are coming for Chromebooks?
3,470.
They would assist us in the deployment, just like they did with the deployment with the teachers earlier in the year. And then when we get the, the devices that will replace those teachers, they will assist us with that as well. They were instrumental with the iPads. And one critical item that they would provide us is at the end of the year, one of the biggest things that we're going to navigate for the very first time here in NACADOTSD is going to be the re-acquisition and the regathering of our devices from our students. And they would be with us as well in streamlining, helping to set up systems so that we will be able to do that. And hopefully we wouldn't have to continue a relationship with them. But if we did, then, Mr. Montoya, your question would benefit us as well. But hopefully our technology and the system we have will be able to benefit from their partnership to give us systems on how to re-acquire all of our technologies in a most efficient way so that we can get them reimaged and ready to go out for the next school year.
Please, Dr. to you.
Any additional questions regarding this item?
This is so out of my realm of understanding. So if this is a stupid question, just please forgive me. I think I understand their services in terms of helping to come in and fix a problem that occurs and also the distribution and all, and then the regathering and everything. Are they, are they gonna be able to help us? You know, we have so many systems and softwares and things that are supposed to work together and, and what has been a chronic problem at NISD for over a decade is that the, we buy things and they are supposed to talk and then they don't talk for us because we have some problems. Are they gonna be able to help us with that?
Miss App.
Not even their job?
Absolutely. It's their job and I'm glad to ask the question. They have already integrated many of the existing programs that we have had problems for years trying to get integrated and work together. So yes, ma'am, to answer your question, absolutely.
So the fact that Canvas is not talking to gradebook, they'll be able to help us fix that?
They will be able to help us fix it. Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Good.
Any additional questions?
Dr.
Thank you, Mrs. App. That was a very good question, Mrs. App. Thank you for that.
Dr. Gromen, something that comes to my mind with the, particularly at the high school with virtual teaching, in the classroom teaching and trying to do the gradebooks and preparing and making videos. This, I think, needs to be a priority to get this gradebook integrated to help our teachers at the high school do their best in other areas. So they just have to do it one time and not many times. So that's, that's my opinion, but certainly we need to assist our professional teachers at the high school and everywhere, but particularly at the high school with some prioritization of them, I think.
Yes, sir. I would concur.
Any additional questions? That's gonna move us to item two, consideration of purchase of Smart Tag System. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, President Fitch. If I may, I'd like to share my screen with you all just for a moment. See if I can get this going here. Okay, everybody see a slide that says Smart Tag?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's Smart Tag? We presented Smart Tag, I believe, back in 2018. Took a look at it. Decided to go back and do a little bit more research and we're bringing it back for your consideration again. What Smart Tag is, is a secured mobile authorized ridership technology. The system is designed to assure authorized ridership and improve the safety and security of students who utilize bus transportation services. I'm gonna run through this slideshow really quickly. Feel free to stop me anytime. So Smart Tag, we have a, will offer us an electronic pre and post-trip inspection that's of our school buses. It, it gives us the option of having a fleet-wide GPS system. We have on-bus ridership by name of, of the students. So we know who's on our buses by name. Multiple, multiple communication methods and we'll go into that a little deeper. Okay, so from the driver's side, this is what it looks like, what things will look like. First of all, when the driver gets on their bus, they'll be prompted and to confirm that they do not have the coronavirus and have been symptom-free for the past 14 days. They'll have to check off on that. Secondly, pre-trip inspection, of course, all of our drivers do pre-trips inspections, however they do them now via paper. This now will, will be an electronic process where they will check off each of the items of importance, a regular check prior to going out to pick up our students. Has electronic seating chart capability. So if we, we put this tool in place and we do have a positive case of COVID, then we know that who was sitting in close proximity to that student who may need to be quarantined or notified. There's a turn-by-turn navigation system which will help our, our sub-drivers when we have to have sub-drivers on the routes and or, and/or newly hired drivers to get to their stops on time. So this is what they're gonna see. This is actually a tablet that will be located inside of the bus itself. Authorized loading. So this tells the driver when a student is authorized to load the bus and also when, make sure that they're getting off at the right stop. Many times we have students who decide that they're gonna go over to their friend's house and get on, get on their friend's bus or either get off of their bus at a stop that is not authorized by their parents. So you might hear a little sound here. So that is the, you're, you're, you're welcome to come onboard. You're, you're welcome to off, offload. You're at the right location. When, when unauthorized loading or unloading of a student happens, the bus driver will get an alert. It will be a red alert just, just as on the screen here and you'll hear something like that. The bus driver will hear that and they will know immediately that the student does not supposed to be on this, this bus or should not unload at this particular location. When they attempt to get on the wrong bus or off, off the wrong stop, you get the alerts again. If a student forgets their tag, this question comes up often or because there are some days I come to work and I forget my ID badge or tag. What happens is the driver can't knows, the driver has their list of students over here and they can manually allow that student to load so that they can get them to school. As you can see, their name is here. They just, it's a touchscreen. So that's load and it allows the student to be on here. It also logs every rider that gets on the bus in every location that they were picked up, every location they were dropped off. So again, this just talks about the manual loading of the bus again. Guardian, this is a required feature that helps ensure students are released only to their authorized guardian. So we have a little picture there of the student. We have her check beside her name. And should she not, should her parents decide to pick her up for a doctor's appointment or something like that, the bus driver is not sitting out there at the bus stop waiting on Samantha. the bus driver is not sitting out there at the bus stop waiting on Samantha to come and get on the bus. We know that Samantha now is a car rider because she has a doctor's appointment this afternoon. Now we're going to look at the administration side of, of the software. So this is just a simple dashboard that provides live information to keep transportation as well as the campuses informed about where the buses are, if there are any delays, if there's been any accidents, defects with a bus. So this is just a quick dashboard so that the tech, actually the transportation department can take a look at it every morning to see where, just where things are in real time. Also has a visual map with GPS, so again, we can locate our buses live. We do actually have a program similar to this right now, but what we're trying to do is consolidate our programs. And I believe if, if approved, this, we could get, we could get rid of another program that we currently use to do a feature like this that would, would save us approximately about seventeen thousand dollars a year. The, again, the bus borer can click on any bus and open a win, a window to find out where that bus is and how, what students are still remaining on that bus. The great part about that feature is sometimes we have accidents. And one of the main issues that we have, it's an administration, is trying to contact those parents as quickly as possible to let them know that, one, their, their child has been in an accident, two, to let them know that they're going to be late, the bus is going to be late bringing them home. So this is a very valuable piece of the program here. Again, the GPS points are recorded for every route that's driven, so we will know exactly where that bus has been or stopped. If it stopped at railroad crossings, so on and so forth, how fast it was going, just all kinds of invaluable information. Again, here we are with a geo fence. We can place a geo fence around the bus to make sure that it's not going outside of its designated area, route areas. We can always do a student search. It quickly allows us to take a look at the students again that are on the bus, including the assigned routes and the riding history. So Mr. Lampkin and his team can go back and see how many days or how many times the student rode the bus. Parent notifications, I want, the most important part of the program, in my opinion. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we are unable, or it makes it very difficult for us to contact our parents when our buses are running late. So this will allow us to be able to send a text message very easily with very little effort to all of the students who are still on the bus. That's important, too. We might start out with fifty on a bus, and after a few stops, it's down to thirty. So now in real time, we'll know exactly who's on that bus and who has gotten off the bus. We will have, it also includes automated reports, special ed, monthly reimbursement, annual ridership mileage, and on-time arrivals and max bus capacity. So these are all very important for reporting purposes. For our campuses. Campuses will also see, be able to see some of the bus routes and where the buses are located. Every now and then they're running five to ten minutes late, so our administrators will be able to see that rather than have them having to go to the office, call the bus borer, the bus borer radio to the bus to try to find out what's going on. We will have a real-time view, and the campus administration will have that view as well. Campus personnel can click on any bus to see which students are on the bus and which ones have been dropped off. So going home, they can check on those students because mom or dad will sometime call the school to say, hey, my kid had made it. The bus may be running five or ten minutes late. And I think we're kind of going to the student profile. I think this is important here. That again, in the situation, there, there's going to be a little bit of information in here with regards to the student. You see medical condition down here, so student is susceptible to seizures or any allergies or things of that nature. Then the driver will be able to see and, and can act appropriately should something happen there. This is a module that we're, we're not currently asking for, but maybe asking for a little, little later once we've tested, driven the program. But this is a smart dismissal. It informs teachers when there's an exception or a change to the dismissal schedule for their student. So I'm a teacher, I'm in the classroom, the bus is running late, the principal says, oh, the kids right now, oh, the intercom, oh, bus, oh, room twelve for bus forty-two, it's running late. This way we will be able to do it electronically. And now for the parents. Parents can view their child's profile and riding history and sign up for the smart alerts. Smart alerts are just going to be messages, usually in form of text, which notify this, the parents of the location of the students, mainly again if they're running late or something unfortunate has happened. We also, from time to time, have, have buses that, you know, break down. And again, the toughest part for our transportation department is to contact every parent, find out exactly which students are still on the bus, and then contact every one of those parents. Has a smart locate feature that allows parents to see the location of the bus on a map. And then here are some of our Texas school districts that use Smart Tag. We talked with, we had a WebEx actually last Thursday again to take a look at it, and they are bringing on more customers and more features. And I can't, I can't remember right now, but they're going to include us in one of the new features that they are bringing out next fall. Be happy to answer any questions about Smart Tag that we can.
I have a couple of questions. First, the, the price you're listing is a hundred and four thousand three hundred and sixty-six fifty. And of that, of that cost, does that include that first year of the annual recurring cost of seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars?
It does, it doesn't include the first, the entire first year, yes, sir. However, I will tell you that because it is late in the year, there, there could be, and I will preference this with could, should, a prorated cost. So it may come in a little bit under that one oh four, but it does include that, that recurring cost for the first year. The recurring cost only comes year two, starts year two.
Now, in regards to that cost of the second year, if this is coming out of ESSR funds, what happens if we don't get those funds? Will we have to come up from that from the regular budget?
We will have to budget for that seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. And then keep in mind that this is an implementation cost, that one oh four is an implementation, implementation cost, which includes quite a bit of equipment. The tablets, the modems that go, or some, I'm sorry, the hotspots that go on the bus. There's quite a bit of equipment that is, that's included in that hundred and four thousand dollar cost.
Mr. Martin, I might add also, we have had conversations with Mr. Burbriken finding out that this may meet the specifications with regards to ESSR funds with, we're looking at. Primarily what I'm concerned with is the current state that we are in and making sure that when we identify students that have been separated from the campus and they are on buses, this would give us a first level of notification to a driver whenever a student is not to be coming on the bus to school. That would give us a kind of a first level of, of notification. The other aspect of going to Mr. Matoya's point is the, the savings. My understanding, Mr. Martin, now this is part of Board Book or ByBoard, should I say? And because it's because of ByBoard, several years ago, when we were first looking at this in NACADOTCHAS, we actually are seeing that there's a difference in the cost. It's less to purchase into it now, which worked to our advantage if we would have purchased it years ago. We would not, number one, have the benefit of ESSR funds, and then number two, because it's on ByBoard, you, you wind up getting a lesser cost because now they are there. This is a program that I'm familiar with, utilized it to its full potential and launched it in a previous district and saw a lot of tremendous benefits with regards to ridership. The biggest component is the parent component. Parents being able to identify where their child is and opt, and opt-in on several other features on their mobile device. They, they need to opt-in. We, we can't push it out to them. Parents have to opt-in to receive that, that notifications.
Thank you, Dr. Heyo. You stole my thunder. That was my next point.
Sorry about that, Mr. Martin.
It's okay. It is part of ByBoard now. When we were looking at it in 2018, it was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Now we're looking at a hundred and four thousand dollars, which is a difference of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars as well. We are saving. We had them quoted without the Board, ByBoard price, and it was a hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. So again, we, we're getting about a fifteen percent savings there of fifteen thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
Dr. Gromen, I have a question. Mr. Martin? The, how, what's the distance between NACADOTCHAS and Round Rock, where this company is from? How many miles is it? Do you know?
Round Rock's around Austin, I would, a smooth, three and a half hours, three hours, three and a half hours.
Well, what I, what I was looking at is they, their prices go up beyond two hundred miles. Or so are we aware of, are we in or out of that two hundred miles for their travel expenses? When they have to come and fix things on our buses?
Dr. Gromen, I'll have to look that one up. It's very close, I'll tell you, to the two hundred.
Well, I think it would be good if we get that ironed out, maybe before we have to vote that on that on, on Thursday. Because I don't know where I read it in here, but I read it somewhere. I can say a couple of things. Number one, I want to just say, we have some very professional bus drivers. I saw them out this morning before six o'clock, coming out like a line of eagles driving safely and merging onto the loop to go get their students. And they're doing a good job. Mr. Lampkin does a good job. And I think that this moves us into a more, helping the, them be more professional and us having a better safety margin with our, our students. I did check with some of the schools that, that utilize this, Eames and Austin, Midlothian. What, both of those people are from leadership TASB groups, and they, they like it. I noticed also it was used in Grand Prairie and a lot of other A-leaf. Some smaller school districts like New Caney, Round Rock. So we're actually, what's the word? We're, we're moving to a higher plane of care for our bus-riding students. And I think that this is well evaluated. I did have one more, instead of a comment, one more thought. The way I understand it, there is a recurring fee per bus per day or something like that. There's a charge that goes on. Is that correct? For internet access or something like that?
A recurring fee for internet access? Yeah. Look here. Well, I'm looking for that, Dr. Gromen. Some of my colleagues has, have informed me that the mileage is two hundred and eleven to Round Rock from here to Round Rock. So we'll work with our vendor. That's close enough. I think that they should be able to work with us to lower those rates.
Well, you know, I think we're only buying forty-five units, right?
Yes, sir.
Forty, so forty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, but don't we have seventy some, about seventy buses?
No, sir, not anymore.
Okay, so basically every bus that's being used, we'll, we'll have this. But it gets quite expensive if we ask them to come and just do a small amount of work. Eventually, they'll be, we'll need to have them work on this. So we need to prepare for our, our future expenses. Okay, if, if you could check into that and see, I believe there's some kind of charge that's an ongoing charge per day, per bus or something like that. So that we can know this is what extra it's going to cost us. It's not a surprise. We know upfront. This is it.
Okay, we, we.
And I could be wrong. I could be wrong, but I, I'd still rather investigate and, and just know that this is not just the initial cost. This is the ongoing cost.
Yes, sir. No problem.
And do, do, do say thank you to all the transportation people, everybody that works in that. They're doing a great job. And we're glad that they're in this new transportation center.
Thank you, sir. Will do.
Any additional questions regarding the Smart Tag? All right, hearing none, we'll move to the next item three, which is nomination of candidate for the TASB Board of Directors. Last week, we received an email from TASB, Regional TASB, indicating that there is a vacancy on the TASB Board of Directors. Mr. Beard, who has been serving as our Regional TASB representative, has moved into the vice president position of TASB, which has opened up his seat. And the TASB Board of Directors will be making an appointment to fill that position. And we do have the opportunity to nominate a candidate to fill that position. I, since we have a graduate of TASB leadership on our board in Dr. Gromen, I would like to ask him if, if we were to nominate you, Dr. Gromen, would you be willing to be our nominee for that position?
If nominated, I will comply.
Will comply.
Can I just say, I would really support that after being, going to the delegation assemblies for the last two years. Most of those policies are being driven to TASB, are being driven by larger school districts. The people that are put on those boards and sit in the executive. I think if we don't really represent Region Seven, we're doing our, we're doing NISD a disservice. So I wholeheartedly sending Dr. Gromen, especially with his leadership TASB certificate. I, I think that's a great idea. That's just me.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Any other thoughts or comments on this? I do agree.
I have a thought, Dr. Gromen. I think this is an appropriate time to say. I've had a lot to say because I've got a lot in my heart. One thing that's very important, including the people that haven't spoken today. Everyone was a part of the L-TASB, TASSA meeting. And when you look at high-functioning boards, everybody is a self-learner. They continuing to, they continue to learn. And not only they learn, but they join together in unity and work together with vision to accomplish what we envision is best for our students and, and for our teachers and everything. And I, I really think that we are on the road to do this. And this is one of the reasons why. I've looked at this, this application. It's quite detailed. But you know what? If, if it can help, just the fact that NACADOTCHAS Independent School District, we are interested and being involved. We are not just our own little place anymore. We, we're looking to have outward influence and help make things better. And I appreciate everybody's support in this. I, it's not about me. It's about us. It's about who we are and what we are becoming. And we want to reach the highest functioning level that possibly can because it's, it's shown. shown, the higher the board functions, the higher the the better that the students do. And that's what that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman. Any other thought?
I'm sorry, am I correct that every school within Region Seven will nominate one and evaluate and make a decision?
I I think a more accurate way to say it is every school district has the opportunity to nominate someone in Region Seven, right? That is correct. So in in reading through the information they sent, it appears since it's a an unexpired term, that it would be feeling that it will be a decision of the Tazby Board of Directors will name the replacement from the nominations they receive, is my understanding.
It's a short term, it's only it's only until next spring, it would only be a matter of months.
I don't remember, well, I'm sure you read through it, I I thought there was more time than that, but.
Yeah, I think
The elections would be next next June, I guess, at that meeting.
Okay.
When the normal elections are.
So this position's finishing out.
Yes, it would be just to fill the term. And it would be the with the one that that Ted Baird, he left that position. He actually, he he advised us and and asked people to to apply a year and a half ago, when he knew he was going to be moving up and and then stepping out of that position.
Any other discussion on this item?
Ms. Fitch, would it be appropriate to move 3B1 and 3B3 to consent?
We, because we had a delay because of fall break in our meeting, we were not able to make any changes to the agenda.
I got you, okay.
President Fitch?
Yes, yes, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, if it pleases the board, I have an answer to Dr. Gorman's question about the recurring fee.
Yes, sir.
That that annual, it's an annual renewal service plan of $50 per bus, and it's $50 per bus, that is included in the annual recurring cost of $17,411.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, my pleasure.
All right, we will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is executive session. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and is allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. It is now 1:33 PM. Since we are doing this meeting via Zoom, I will announce that we would not return to open session before 2:00 PM. All right, board members, I believe, just checking in, you all have your Zoom information correct to log into executive session?
Yes, I do.
All right, see you there in a few minutes.
Okay, he's in.
I believe we've got all of our board members back with us. And we will reconvene into open session, I showed us now 2:19 PM. All right, our next item on the agenda are any future agenda items, any requests? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Mindy, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mindy, do we have a second?
I have a second.
That sounded like Mr. Nirmond with the second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all so much, and we will see you Thursday.
Thursday, have a good week.
You, too.
Thank you, Dr. Trahia Young, Pam, your hard work and your leadership.
Sure, you have a good one.
You as well.